Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Resiting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. I have a cold, so bear with me. It is my pleasure to call to order the May 17th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the world.
Commissioner Lomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bell? Commissioner Kater?
Here.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Rednick?
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see how this works. It sounds needs to be turned down. All right. Pretty light schedule tonight. So Agenda Item Number, sorry, Three. We will now receive public statements. This is the time reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the consent calendar public hearings portion of the agenda. If you hear on item 5A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward.
Since I'm here, Madam Chair, Ms. Lomas, and honorable members of the Planning Commission, I read in the newspaper today that the downtown P bid was unsuccessful. Apart from how you may feel about the P bid and what it was trying to accomplish, I wanted to bring up an idea that personally I've had for a long time, and that is, I think it's time for the Planning Commission to look into adopting a downtown-specific plan. And I know there's probably been some talks about something like that, but I think the role of a Planning Commission can be one of leadership, one of taking on issues that maybe are not being brought up by, you know, other members of the public, and it's a good place for things like this to start. There's a City of Lodi had a great, very successful use of a downtown-specific plan when they were trying to revitalize their downtown. And specific plans are great because with commercial developments, a lot of times the Planning Commission has the ability with PD plans to, of course, dictate how the architectural and the field those projects come to fruition. But unfortunately downtown, and one of the great things about downtown, but also one of the negative things, is there's not a cohesive development of the parcels. We have parcels that are being developed for the first time. We have parcels that are going through transitions from one type of use to another. And I think it'd be a great opportunity, it's a great time now with some of the folks that are moving back into downtown, to maybe look at adopting or going through the adoption process of a specific plan. There's been downtown shirets, but a lot of times those items that were started by the community don't have the teeth in them to really meet the intended goal. So I just want to encourage you to maybe possibly look at looking into a downtown-specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we will now move on to Agenda Item Four, Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing. These Agenda Items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any Commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar non-public hearing item for separate consideration? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items. Commissioner Kater?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? Commissioner Coleman? Did you say yes?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
I think I'll pick on you next.
I wasn't here for the meeting last time, so I didn't want to be one for making a motion to adopt.
Okay, you're smart. You're a smart one. All right, now we're moving on to Agenda Item Five, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next Agenda section includes public hearing items that have been considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff under condition in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The Community Development Director, who is here, hi Ms. Kitchen, will read each of the items on the consent calendar and ensure that the public has an understanding of all the items to be considered. If you'd like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that that item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or Commissioner, the Commission will vote on the items together in one motion without further comment. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Chairman Lomas. We only have one item on the consent calendar this evening, and it's an amendment to Section 17.080-140, 17.680-60, 17.610-10, 17.610-30, and 17.6070 related to updates to the landscaping ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, I will open this consent calendar public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing item? Please come forward, state your name.
Chair Lomas, I request that Item Number 5A be removed from the consent calendar public hearing items.
And your name?
Elliot Kirshman.
Thank you. All right, then, I won't ask if the Commissioner wants to because it is already removed. So we will just move on with that item into public hearings. So now is the time to hear this consent calendar public hearing item that was removed from that portion of the agenda. Before I begin, I'd like to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful, which everyone here is. We have already opened the public hearing, so we... Ms. Kitchen, would you like to provide a staff report?
Certainly, Chairman Lomas. So what this item is, it's an update to the landscaping requirements that are applicable citywide to commercial and industrial projects and multifamily projects. This item was brought up at the direction of Councilmember Freeman. He made a referral to the Planning and Development Committee at the February 21st City Council meeting. He had been observing some of the existing landscape and some of the new landscape installations throughout the city, and directed staff to take a look at our current standards and review them to see if they should be updated or increased. So we did do that, and we took the results of our research to the Planning and Development Committee in April, and we presented them with our findings. And so I will present those findings to you today as well. Just first, we provided them with a little bit of background. The existing landscape ordinance was adopted in 1998 in its current form. Before that, there were a number of different landscape ordinances throughout the city, and they all came together under one uniform code in 1998. And the purpose of that ordinance is to establish uniform criteria and standards for landscaping throughout the community, and to provide landscaping that creates a transition and mitigates conflicts between adjacent land uses. And landscaping was also noted to reduce air noise and visual pollution impacts, and also produce healthy, vibrant, sustainable urban forest throughout our community, which would in turn decrease temperatures and increase overall comfort, and to also promote water use efficiency. So as I mentioned before, landscaping is now required for any project throughout the city that's subject to site plan review. Typically, that includes commercial projects, industrial projects, and multifamily projects. The current landscape ordinance is also applicable to any expansions or remodels that increase the valuation of that facility greater than 50%. So in order to take Councilmembers' direction to analyze our ordinance, we looked and categorized it into a couple of different categories. Basically, the standards relate to minimum tree sizes, landscaping along public streets, the spacing of new trees, parking lot screening, drive-through screening, and minimum shrub size. So we'll go through those in a little more detail now. First, with regard to the minimum tree size, our current standard is a 15-gallon tree. That's the smallest one there on the right, and that is the minimum-sized tree that must be installed with any new landscaping. The tree must also be from an approved list that is on file at the Development Services Department, and it must be able to achieve a 40% shade canopy within the parking area within 15 years. Other jurisdictions that we found have a range anywhere from the 15-gallon that we have currently, all the way up to a 24-inch minimum box requirement. Councilmember had requested that we increase our 15-gallon to 24-inch box, and during the committee meeting in April, the committee recommended that we do the same, and that's what's before us tonight. Regarding landscaping along public streets, we currently require that any property that's adjacent to a public street include a landscaping strip. And that strip has to be 10 feet wide on an arterial street and 8 feet wide on collector and local streets. And that's measured from the end of the right-of-way line, which is typically 30, 60, et cetera, feet from the center line of the road. Now, currently, this landscape strip could be reduced administratively by staff if the planning director makes a finding that the total square footage is consistent and that the overall design is consistent with the intent of the landscape chapter. So in other jurisdictions, we found the typical size of the landscape buffer was anywhere from 5 to 10 feet. Councilmember Freeman had asked that we change the current 8 and 10-feet requirements up to 15 feet for both arterials and collectors, and the committee agreed with that in April and is recommending the same. With regard to the spacing of new trees, our current ordinance requires that trees be placed at a minimum ratio of one tree for 30 feet within those landscape strips. Now, this doesn't mean they literally have to be all 30 feet apart. This is more of a formula used to calculate the number of trees. Ideally, it would be one tree for every 30 feet. However, the ordinance does require the grouping of the trees to accommodate for things like driveways, signs, other physical barriers on the property. So an example would be if a street had 90-foot of frontage, they would be required to do a minimum of three trees in that frontage. Other jurisdictions have a range of anywhere from one per 20 feet all the way up to one per 30 feet like we do. Councilmembers' requested change was to create a requirement for one tree per every 15 feet. However, during the committee meeting, it was discussed that this may create a shade canopy that was too dense and not allow the tree to grow out to its full size. So the committee is recommending one per every 20 feet. And again, based on the species of the tree, those could be grouped if they had a larger canopy. Let's see. Regarding parking lot screening, our current ordinance requires that any parking lot with 10 or more spaces that is adjacent to a street be screened from the street using either a berm retaining wall hedge or a combination thereof at a minimum height of 2 feet. Other jurisdictions have a requirement of anywhere from 2 feet to 4 feet. The councilmember had requested to look at increasing that from 2 feet to 4 feet, and during the committee discussion, the committee agreed and is recommending the same tonight. With regard to the screening of drive-throughs, that wall is a little taller. Our current ordinance requires a minimum height of 3 feet, and that can be with an evergreen hedge or a wall. And other jurisdictions currently have anywhere from 2 and 1/2 to 3 feet required. Originally, the councilmember had requested that this drive-through screening be increased from 3 feet to 5 feet. However, after consultation with the police department and others, it was agreed upon during the committee that 4 feet would be the recommendation for tonight. Regarding minimum shrub size, our current ordinance requires a minimum of 5-gallon containers, and it does have a provision that mass planting can go all the way down to use of a 1-gallon container, provided that those 1-gallon shrubs are spaced at a ratio of 18 inches on center. And there is a requirement that those shrubs grow to create a 75% ground coverage within four years of planting. Other jurisdictions have anywhere from a 1 to a 5-gallon container. The councilmember had requested that we increase the size from 5 gallons to 10. However, during the committee meeting, there were several architects, residents and landscape architects, and they indicated that the 10-gallon size is rather difficult to find in our local area. So the council, or the committee made a compromise and is recommending use of the 5-gallon for up to 40%, and only the 1-gallon for 60%. So instead of the mass planting with 1 gallon and 18 inches on center, you would only be allowed to do 60% using the 1 gallon. There is another consideration to keep in mind as we move forward, and that is the Model Water-Efficient Landscape Ordinance. Now, this is something that was passed by the state originally in 1991, and it's a mandate to reduce water use by establishing a statewide water conservation requirements for any new landscape and renovations. Now, this has been updated several times since then, in 2010 and in 2015, and it will continue to be updated every three years as we move forward. You've probably noticed in a lot of single-family new constructions, the grass in the front yard has gotten smaller and smaller and smaller, and that is mostly in part due to the Model Water landscape requirements and other state drought requirements. So what this law does is it establishes a water budget for each project, and it requires that any new projects create a, fill out a worksheet, and create a landscape plan, and use specific irrigation requirements that reduces the amount of water used. So if executed correctly, the changes that are being proposed to our landscape ordinance could be executed in compliance with this law. You would just need to use the appropriate type of plants to make sure that you can meet the water budget. Some other considerations. Our current standards require that tree pruning should follow the International Society of Arbiculture Pruning Guidelines, and that's kind of where our standard ends. A lot of the issue seems to be with pruning of trees in landscape and parking lots. There are other jurisdictions that require the use of a certified gardening or maintenance service or a certified arborist for any pruning activities. We are not recommending that tonight, and the committee did not recommend that solely because it would be a substantial increased cost for maintenance to our local property owners, and it would also be an increased cost to city staff to enforce and monitor this requirement. But it is something to consider. So with that, this is an overview and a summary of the changes that are being proposed tonight. Again, these are coming from the City Council Planning and Development Committee, and this is their recommendation. You can see our existing ordinance requirements on the left and the proposed requirements on the right, and those are the screening for parking lots and drive-throughs, the minimum shrub size, the minimum tree size, the minimum size of the buffer strips, and the minimum ratio of trees. So you can see those recommendations there. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? Seeing no one, is anyone like to speak in opposition?
Madam Chairwoman and members of the Planning Commission, you know, you asked that question, and it's not really an opposition. I don't feel like, you know, changing an ordinance...
Sorry, I got to interrupt. State your name.
My name is Elliot Kirshman.
Thank you.
Sorry. I should have said that. So first of all, I'd like to applaud Councilmember Freeman's effort to beautify our city. I think changing the landscape ordinance is a really great thing to take on. Councilmember Freeman in his past, you know, life, you know, was a developer, and the projects that he worked on are beautiful. You go through Castle &amp; Cook's projects, and they are some of the nicest in town, and they did a great job. But tonight, I'd like to go through some of the proposed changes. I'd like to agree with the city's proposal and the committee's proposal on some items, and I'd like to disagree, maybe not disagree, but try to maybe have a little bit more of a discussion on a few of the items. First of all, the stated purpose of the code, of the landscape code, of the development code, is to encourage economic development and to mitigate unwanted design in order to enhance the city's character and quality of life. So I think that's important as we go and look at revising codes, to have that forefront of our mind. What's our purpose here? Section E, the change that the city's proposing from 20, Section E is to change from 24-inch shrubs along the screening to 48. I don't see an issue with that. I think that, I think those are great things. I think when a developer and a maintenance crews go out and actually trim plants to 24 or even 36 or 48-inch, I think it's great. I think the biggest problem we have, and this is going to be a theme throughout my presentation, is that we require developers and folks that put in landscaping to development in a certain way, and then all of a sudden, they get sold, the projects get sold, and landscapers get lazy. And so the intentions of having nice, beautiful landscaping fall by the wayside rather quickly when it gets hot or when... And so these nice, beautiful hedges that you decided that we required become little plants, right? That the landscapers, you know, put a circle around, right? And so the idea of screening the headlights goes away. And so I'm not necessarily against that, but I think it's important that we, as a community, look at ways to encourage our maintenance folks to do the proper care of these plants and to achieve the goal, which is to have a hedge. Secondly, Chapter 17.61 is the chapter that deals specifically with the landscaping, and that Director Kitchen, you know, she framed some of the purposes of that. The provision is on this section, that's 17R, intended to provide a transition between and mitigate conflicts between adjacent land uses. Also, to promote and attract visual harmony between the landscape and development, reduce air noise, visual pollution, produce a healthy, vibrant, sustainable urban forest, decrease the temperature, increase comfort, and promote commerce and socialization while promoting water use efficiency. That goal is a really great goal, and that should be the lens that we look at each individual proposed change through. Is the change going to meet the goal of this section? So in 1761-3, the proposal is to increase the landscape area from 10-feet buffer to 15-feet buffer. And that's a big blanket increase, an increase of 50%. But I don't necessarily have an issue with the increase. I think that, you know, previously, the planning director, the planning staff had some discretion when they looked at the whole of your landscape plan, and they saw, okay, well, some areas it's appropriate to have 10, and some areas it was not. And I'll give you a perfect example. A lot of times in our commercial centers, the lights shine into the street, and there's parking along the frontage. And then the city requires a deceleration lane to slow the traffic down when there is a certain amount of traffic that's going to enter into a curb cut. Mr. Padilla can tell us exactly what that is, but that's quite frequently what happens in most large commercial centers. So what happens is you have a nice row of parking, and then the city makes you give some land to them for a street, and then you get a skinny landscaping. So you have, you know, basically 10 feet, because that's the standard now, along the frontage, and then it widens out, you know, when the deceleration lane is not there, to, you know, 20, a lot of times 15 or 20 feet. My proposal is, let's go out and look. Let's see if it's really appropriate to always have 15, because if you say we always have 15, then the sections where the deceleration lane are will be 15 feet, because that's going to meet the code, and the sections where there are no deceleration lanes are going to be more like 20 feet, sometimes 25 feet. And if a developer wanted to stay consistent, have 15 feet all along the frontage of their property, which is what they're going to try to do to maintain their parking ratios, they're going to have a jog in the parking. And I just think that it's nice to have a linear parking field, you know, at least, you know, from a visual standpoint. I'd like to now take you on a little walk around our city. I took a bunch of pictures, and I'd like to look at some of these examples. So if I may. If I talk too long, you just let me know. Can you see that okay? So this is a shopping center on Panama on Ash. This is the new Les Schwab tires. Now, to keep this in mind, we're going to try to make a decision, the Planning Commission is going to make a decision on whether or not the landscape standards need to be updated. So we need to look at the trees. We need to see, are we meeting the current goals and standards that we have, or is there really a need? So look at Les Schwab tires. There is a lot of trees. This is planted one per 30, right? You see that some trees are farther apart than others. That's the grouping that the city is talking about. But fast forward your mind's eye a few years, and imagine, those are sycamore trees, and they get very large. I got a picture of what large ones look like here coming up. And so what do we think is going to happen when that tree grows in five years? Well, what's going to happen is the tree is going to cover the signs that Les Schwab put on their center. Les Schwab owns that parcel, and so Les Schwab is going to say, hey, guys, I just spent a bunch of money on my signs, and I don't want to cover the signs. And so what are they going to do? They're going to hire somebody to come out, and they're going to trim those trees. That's what happens all the time. You see time and time again where folks hire people to trim trees, and they do not trim them. I know the code says you're supposed to trim them per the, you know, an arborist standard, but the reality is, is that Les Schwab is not going to do it unless, you know, you have a property management company that is responsible for the whole area. Here's another example. This is just down the street. Those are sycamore trees that are a little older, and you can see those are planted at the 1 to 30 ratio, right? So if you take those trees and you plant the same tree and you put them 1 to 20 feet apart, what do we get? We get canopies that grow into each other. And so maybe the sycamore tree is not the right tree for that spot. But I brought a copy of the tree list. It's 10 pages long, and most of the trees, a lot of the trees, you know, they're categorized by size, they have canopies that at 15 years are going to be, you know, 21, 35, 45, 55 feet in diameter. So those are going to be large trees. And think about this, we increase the size of the landscape from 10 to 15 feet. It gives the trees more space to grow. Now that tree is going to be naturally more prone to get bigger. But yet, we increase the amount of trees on our street frontage, and so now they're not going to grow the way they're supposed to, and it's going to create this hedge. One of the issues on Panama Lane here, I got a few coming up, is we're about all the signs. Once again, this is what we fight as developers. Tendents say, they can't see my sign. They don't know where I am. The ordinance says we only can have four monuments per street frontage and one pylon per street frontage, and yet I got a bunch of tenants in here. And so we rely on those signage. Now, something that City of Bakersfield has seen, you know, quite a bit lately is buildings are brought up to the street frontage, and so those signage become more and more important and prominent as the developments sort of mature. So my issue is, you know, by increasing the amount of trees, we're going to be not meeting one of the goals, which is to make sure that we have an economical, a code that is economically viable. I'm going to keep going here. These are some trees on Panama Lane. Does anybody know which building this is? Does anybody tell me? Well, there's a nice sign that says Current Schools right behind all those trees, right? Now, Current Schools would love you to be able to see their sign. They have a pylon sign right down there. But my point is, is that as trees grow, this is what we get. There's nothing wrong with this. As a community, we have to decide whether this is important to us or where is that balance point between the landscaping, you know, and the economic value. Here's some other trees. So this is on Stockdale Highway. There's a lot of trees in the street frontage, right? So you can count them, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. You know, there's probably, you know, 10 trees here with nice, mature canopies. Once again, where's our signage? You know, we know that Chick-fil-A is there and a few other places, but obviously not hurting because there's a bunch of people in line. Here's another good example of the screening wall. That's probably a three-foot screen wall. This is an example of somebody who takes care of their landscaping. This is turning on a California Avenue. Once again, here's the screening we're talking about. And the proposed language of screening would go from its current form up about 2 feet is what the requirements would be. Here's some more trees, the CVS behind there. This is a project on Gosford Road. This is Town and Country. My point is, hey, you know, the city's asking us to revise this ordinance. Have we seen ugly projects yet? I mean, what we've seen here is that as long as the trees are properly positioned and the trees are properly maintained and they have a room to grow, they will grow beautifully. Do we really need to increase the amount of trees and the size of the landscaping in order to beautify our city? That's the question I have to ask. Here's an example on Gosford Road. This is a Castle &amp; Cook project. This is an example where the code's not being met, right? The trees are supposed to be at least 65 feet apart. There's not a lot of trees here. There's one tree that's dead. But here's an example where it's still beautiful. The landscaping is still beautiful. Probably the trees are taken out for signage reasons or whatnot. Probably the trees are taken out for signage reasons or whatnot. This is, uh, on the same Gosford business, Gosford, uh, project. Um, Buffalo Wild Wings has a nice, beautiful sign behind that, that sycamore tree. When they put it in there, I was like, oh, don't put that tree in front of the sign. Just move the tree over just a little bit. Maybe a better way of doing is when we, when we turn these landscaping plans into the city, let's show us where the buildings are going to go, so that we don't have this conflict between trees and signs. And so, there won't be the, the, uh, the temptation to go out and just hack these trees down in, in, in order to keep, you know, the sign, the visual signs, uh, apparent from the street. Here's, uh, another section here on Gosford, no trees. So, here's an example of, of the signage, right? So, look at this project compared to the one on Gosford. This is what I'm saying. You know, consistently, consistently, you know, uh, use of the, or the ordinance is what we really need. You see the difference? And I think ultimately, this project here is going to look like this project, because that's what the nature of the business tries to accommodate. They want to see the signs. So, how do we craft a code? How can we go out and look at this? How can we really put our thinking caps on and say, all right, here's the problem. Let's just not address it with a number. Let's, let's choose the right tree in the right place. Let's choose quality and placement over quantity and, and literally make a more beautiful, a more beautiful city. Here's Panera Bread. I guarantee you, those trees have been, have been cut. You can tell because the trunks of those trees are rather large and the canopy is not rather large. That's not a canopy that's indicative of a tree, of a trunk that size. The reason is because Panera Bread's sign is right behind the trees. That's a problem. Remember, the goal is to lower the temperature. It's to make it inviting. It's to have the social aspect. It'd be great if this walkway on Stockdale Highway was shaded, right? That's what the goal should be. This is a project that I did. I'm very proud of this project. Mustang Square, I went and placed every single tree. The city is, um, is proposing to require 24-inch box trees along all the frontages. I wholeheartedly support that. I believe that the 15-inch, or the 15-gallon tree are the wrong types of trees. They need to be 24, uh, for numerous reasons. One, it gives you a head start in growth. That 24-inch tree is at least a year or two ahead of the 15-gallon tree. Um, I went out to the nursery and I picked out every one of these, uh, these, uh, oak trees, and I placed them. Those were 36-inch box trees. And I placed them so that they didn't impede the sign, right? Current Schools had an important sign. They paid for the sign. And I wanted to make sure that it got put behind the sign instead of in front of it, so there's not a conflict. Notice, this was a 10-foot landscaping section, right? We're in the deceleration lane part of it now, but there's 10 feet. So, here's an example where the 10 feet works perfectly fine. I've got a, uh, Bolt House Properties bought this project from us. They've done a great job taking care of it. Their, their, their hedge is the right size. They've kept the trees. They haven't over-trimmed them, and they're doing a wonderful job, and it's a beautiful center. Here's an example in some industrial, some industrial, uh, part. This is off of, uh, District Boulevard. Once again, here's the goal. Those are sycamore trees that are about 10 years, 10 or 12 years old, right? Those are huge trees. Look at the shade they provide. We don't want to have the temptation for developers and property owners to go and say, I don't want my tree to get big. I got this nice, big sycamore tree. Let's cut it down in, in an effort to, uh, you know, to, to control the canopy. These are the sycamore trees I have in my project on, on Panama on Stein. Notice, you can see Jack in the Box's building. You know, I have required, was required to put two small trees. You can see where the canopy is there versus the canopy of my sycamore trees. I've, we've, we've trimmed and trained those trees to grow above the height of the building, so that when somebody drives down, they know the Jack in the Box is there. And that's what we need to encourage. We need to encourage proper care of these trees and not just, we need to put more trees. Here's a, a view looking out. Notice all the shade that they give. This is on the east side of the property. I love those trees. Here's the most recent, uh, this was the project that was in the staff report. This is, uh, across the street from Town and Country. And they chose very similar trees. They have a palette of, uh, Chinese pistachio trees. They have a palette, um, of sycamore trees. They have, uh, a few, um, uh, stone pine trees. Here's the deceleration lane issue I was talking about. You notice at the bottom of the page here how wide this landscaping is. I went and measured this with my tape measure. That's about 20 feet. When you get up here, this is the deceleration lane area I was talking about, and that is 10 feet. So, um, this lane is required to be dedicated by the city, right, in order to get folks into your property. So, what I'm saying is, what is wrong with this scenario? You have 20 feet plus, which is over your 15 on this side, but when you get to this, uh, this deceleration lane issue, the 10 feet, you know, seems to be, my opinion, uh, sufficient. This also allows parking to, to stay in a lineal fashion. Here's the Chevron, same, same project. Here's the Sully's into that. Notice these big sycamore trees. Remember, a few, a few slides ago, I showed you what large sycamore's tree looks like. That's a big one. That's the one by the side of their building. That tree will be that big, given time and proper care. Now, the question is, is that the right place to put it? Is that the right place to put it in front of Sully's sign? I submit to you that, that the developer there, the owner of that property is going to go, trim that tree. I can't see Sully's sign. Brings us to other issues. Right trees, I talked about right trees in the right place. This is a perfect example of a wrong tree in the wrong place. This is an Italian stone pine, right? Beautiful tree. That's how big that stone pine's going to get. I think this picture tells a big story, that that is the wrong tree to put right there. Now, how, how do we control these things as a community, right? How do we, uh, try to promote healthy trees? Well, that tree is not going to survive. I guarantee you, it's not going to survive there. And they're going to cut it down as fast as possible when it gets to block their sign. So, just saying in the code that we should have more trees is not meeting the, the, remember, the lens of, of what we should try to accomplish, which is let these trees grow, let them become beautiful. Maybe in some cases, there should be less trees. Maybe in some cases, the right tree in the right place is more appropriate than just more. That's something I think we should think about. Here's an example of trees that used to be there, no longer there. The city does not require, as far as I know, they don't go back and check. Um, uh, it's up to this property owner. Maybe there's a TI permit that has to be done when, uh, the new, the new location of Dicky's has to go in there, or a new tenant. As the, the city will go back and check and make sure you have all your trees. You have to say this one's gone. But once again, is that the right thing? That tree died because they didn't care about it. They wanted the supercut sign to be seen. Here's a good, yeah, I think this is a, a mix of good and bad here. Uh, Chick-fil-A, right? You can see their signage, but yet, the building is completely covered. So, podacarpus tree, this is, um, on Stockdale there. It's two and a half feet from that curb right there, from, from that concrete. Podacarpus trees get big. That's what a full-grown podacarpus tree looks like. It will, it will impede. If you take care of it, right, your, the object is to take care of trees, it will impede on that traffic signal. Once again, right tree, right place, not just the number. Here's an example of grouping, right? That's so what the city's trying to ask us to do. Okay, you have to put so many trees along your street frontage. Well, you can group them together. Here's an example of where 20-foot spacing and grouping intersect, right? These trees, I measured them. Maybe they're not quite 20, but they're pretty close, right? Those are Chinese pistachio trees. There's three in a group there. And you notice that the trunk of this tree is doing what? It's literally trying to get away from this one. And it's growing opposite because its, its canopy is being impeded, right? Wouldn't it be better, instead of trying to force three trees in that place, to put one big, beautiful one? Let one tree come to full maturity instead of three trees that are trying to fight and survive. Here's an example on Stockdale Highway where three large trees were grouped together, and the result is apparent, right? These trees are huge. These are ash trees. They grow huge, huge trees. Um, uh, and the developer trimmed them incorrectly. And so, you see what the results is. They're not providing shade for that, for that car. The goal is not being met. One tree that is allowed to grow up tall and beautiful would be much better than three that get, uh, trimmed incorrectly. This is a pet peeve project of mine. I'm going to bring it up because actually, the city, um, uh, actually had this picture in their slide presentation. Um, you know, we talked about the street trees, but what about the, the trees inside the shopping centers? This is a picture, I found this old picture of Sport Chilay, right? This is what it looks like today. Remind yourself here. Shade trees. What happened to all the trees? What happened is the developer came in and bought this center. He said, I don't like those trees, and he tore them out. In the code, it specifically says that if you take out a tree, you're responsible to replace it with the same species and the same size. Very specific. You can ask the planning director if that's the case. I think it is. Those don't look like the same species, and they definitely don't look like the same size. That's something we have to do. We can, we work on the code, but we have to enforce the rules that we have on the books. This is Aldi's. Was Aldi's. It's Aldi's today. Moms don't have shade. Remember, we didn't meet our goal. Reduce the temperature, increase the shade, increase, increase the beauty. See all these beautiful sycamore trees? Beautiful. So, I showed this as an example. It's like, okay, if we're going to break open the code, and we're going to have a discussion about what we, what we need to make our city better, and I applaud, uh, Councilmember Freeman for bringing this up. It's a perfect time. Let's address the code in total. Let's make sure there's some teeth in the code that address developers who, um, who are just not playing by the rules. And the city needs to be able to say, listen, you took the trees out, you're going to put them in. You're going to put at least 36, 54-inch box trees. It's going to hurt. And the first guy is going to, is going to complain, but the second guy is going to think twice before he takes out his beautiful shade, uh, his beautiful shade trees. Other thing in the code that we need to add, and I'm going to wrap it up here, but, um, trees, if we're going to, if we're going to talk about the, the, uh, the, the, the watering of the trees, you know, we've got great calculations about how much water we're using. The problem is, when you dump the water on top of the ground, the tree wants to go and find the water. And so, some species are better than others, but, uh, but a requirement of the code, if we're going to look at it and, and the landscape, you know, irrigation part of it, we should require deep water, deep root watering systems. Every tree should have something like this, and it's, uh, we put them in all of our projects. Um, it's, they're a little bit more expensive, but honestly, they're not. You get a much better tree because of it. And it encourages, instead of the sidewalk being ripped up because the trees are on the, uh, the roots are on the surface, it encourages those roots to go down and find the deep water, and that's really important. It's something we can simply add to the, to the code. You know, then we have the medians, right? We spend all this time and effort and money improving the, the frontages of our pro, projects. Developers spend a lot of time and money, uh, and we also pay, I don't know if you know this, but the developers also pay for the medians. The original medians get paid for by the developers when they develop their properties. And unfortunately, what happens is, for one reason or another, those medians, uh, sometimes don't get taken care of the way they should. It's not anybody's fault. I'm not here to show blow, uh, you know, to show blame anywhere, but, you know, this is important, too. If we're going to improve the side, we also should look at the code and make sure that those medians are being taken care of as well. Here's a nice median. This is on Panama. City does a great job. Those trees are beautiful. Old, old farm road. The city does an amazing job taking care of all those trees. One other thing in the code, just my last slide here. I know I've talked forever. Um, there is a conflict between the code and the utilities. And this is something, this is White Lane, a project that, that we own on White Lane. And you'll notice there's huge overhead power lines, and there's a gas line that you can't see. Um, we, PG&E came to us and said, hey, guys, uh, we got to take all your trees out. We had 28 trees in the, the frontage of this property. And they said, you got, we're going to take them all out. And we said, why? We love our trees. We want to have, you know, shade. And they said, well, there's a high-pressure gas line here. And we told them, we said, hey, we, um, you know, we have this city requirement that we have trees, and you're telling us we got to take them out. Who's right here? And so, I think, you know, ultimately, the city wrote us a letter stating that, you know, we, because of the utilities, we weren't, we didn't have to comply with the landscape code. But I think it'd be good to just put that in the code. Whenever there's a conflict of utilities that you're required to, because of an easement, to have a limited landscaping, in this case, it was because of the San Bruno, uh, uh, you know, catastrophe where the gas line exploded, that PG&E started going and perfecting these easements. They said, hey, wait a minute. There could be a tree, a rock, or whatever. Um, so, I think that would be important for the commission to consider, is, is adding a caveat to the code, is where there's a conflict between the, the, an easement, a utility easement, and the, and the code, the requirements of the code, that, uh, that they'll make provisions for those. In short, in closing, I, I think, and I really think that this is a great time to look at this. Um, I think it's too much for the commission to just say yes or no, without even a full commission, you know, that this is a big change. Um, I submit to you humbly that, uh, maybe an ad hoc committee might be appropriate in this case, where commissioners and the city and the staff and the, and the folks that take care of these projects can go walk some of the, some of the areas in Bakersfield and try to come up with a code that really meets, uh, like I said, the goal and intent of, of, of beautifying Bakersfield. With that, I want to thank you for your time. I, you guys were great listeners, and, uh, I, I look forward to your comments, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor, opposition? Hey, pick something. All right. How about commissioners? Commissioners have any questions at this time?
This is questions?
This is questions. We haven't closed. The public hearing is still open, so we're only going, taking questions right now. We good?
Yeah.
All right. Oh, you want a question? Commissioner Wade?
And this is the time for it, right?
For questions, not opinion.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to, um, hear staff's response to some of the things that were posed. Um, the questions I have about, like, for instance, when a developer does remove trees on a property, are they required to put in the same species and same age trees?
Commissioner Wade, through the chair, yes. The ordinance specifically states that any tree that is voluntarily removed must be replaced within 120 days with a tree that's of the same size, up to a maximum of 48-inch box, and of the same type that's shown on the approved landscape plan. The, a few of the parking lots, I won't be specific, that Mr. Kirschman showed are definitely on my top 10 list of problem areas as well. Uh, and I agree that there's been a seemingly rise in incidence of developers removing trees, not replacing them with sufficient trees. The very limited staff that we have in Development Services, and that's one to two people, uh, have gone out at my direction and have looked at those. We've sent code enforcement out when appropriate, and we have cited. Uh, but there is quite a bit of pushback from the property owners. Uh, in particular, several new shopping, several existing shopping centers have been renovated with new businesses, the ones that Mr. Kirschman was showing. And those tenants, as a part of their lease, required that the property owner remove the trees and replace them with smaller. So, obviously, that's a private negotiation between the business owner and the property owner, but it does create, uh, a difficult situation when staff goes out and makes the property owner aware of the fact that they're out of compliance with the ordinance. It's a very difficult issue. Uh, we're not intending to be the tree police. Uh, I don't think any of us want tree police, uh, but I do hope that the development community takes pride in their property. Uh, Mr. Kirschman indicated that maintenance is really the issue here and appropriate placement. And I think the best person to make that decision are the landscape architects and the people that are designing these properties. The city provides minimums, and those minimums should be strong, and that's why we are bringing forward these increased minimums today. But in terms of getting very specific about exact tree placement, exact tree type grouping, uh, we leave that to the experts and to the property owners and to private business.
Have another question? Mr. Kirschman mentioned that, and this is something I hadn't, hadn't thought of, that, um, with expanding the buffer landscape strip, that if, if it is expanded to 15 feet, it would actually end up being much larger than that for, for areas that have the decel lane. Is that true, as he stated?
Uh, well, the provision remains in the code where the planning director can make an administrative decision, uh, out in the field. And if there needs to be a reduced, uh, landscape area for a decel lane, we can still do that. Uh, that part of the code was left intact, because clearly, there are situations when you can't maintain the entire 15 feet for the entire frontage of the property. Uh, we do want to make sure that we have room for reality when out, out in the field.
Imagining these gigantic, uh, barked strips with little hedges all throughout, just looking like more of a blight than anything else. Um, okay. That's it for me.
Okay.
Taking every opportunity I have.
Yeah, you got it. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. Um, I want to thank
I wanted to thank staff for doing an excellent job of summarizing this. And I know you guys did a lot of work to come up with this plan. It's mentioned in here that the Development Committee met, discussed this. Can you talk a little bit about what was done and who was involved in that?
Sure. The Planning and Development Committee consists of three of the council members. It's chaired by Councilmember Freeman. And we met in April and provided the same or a similar presentation with the proposals based on the direction and our discussions with Councilmember Freeman and the research that we did with other communities. And that essentially, the city council committee process is the ad hoc committee process. We do have that in place. We sent out notice to a wide variety of developers, anyone we could think of. We let them know that this meeting was taking place. We encourage them to share the message, share the word, get it out there, because we do realize this is a big change. This means some increased use of property for landscaping for property owners, and that's a big deal. But we did have a good turnout, a very robust discussion. And in the end, the committee decided to move forward and make this recommendation. And so, pursuant to our council procedures, the next step is that that committee, that ad hoc committee, refer the official ordinance change to the planning commission. And should you guys decide to move forward with a recommendation tonight, it would then go on to council for final approval.
This apply, I talked to you earlier today by phone, and I just wanted to talk publicly about who this applies to. Because I was reading it through, and it was confusing to me because I talked about large retail developments throughout the city, except in the Northeast, when it applies to everybody. And you clarify. Can you clarify that again for me, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Coleman. So, the landscape requirements, and that's Chapter 17.61, apply to any development that's subject to site plan review. And that usually and typically includes any commercial use, any industrial use, and any multifamily use.
And the, I made a note here because I talked about that the proposed changes would apply to existing development, I'm sorry, would not apply to existing developments, but it would apply to new developments. And there are a couple developments that are in the process that, like, I'm thinking to myself about Bakersfield Commons, for example. Would they fall under this new requirement? Or would they fall under the old requirement?
They would fall under the new requirement. They have had their PCD plans approved, which is essentially a site plan. And so, what that does is it locks in the actual layout of the buildings, the parking, those types of things. But there is a condition of approval in every PCD plan that says that the actual construction and design itself will be in compliance with the code. For example, if that PCD plan failed to show one parking space, it was one short for some reason in the drawings, they would still need to build the appropriate number of parking. The same would apply to landscaping. And the Bakersfield Commons Project is actually expecting to come forward for some revisions to their PCD plan in June. So, those will be before you in June. And I have already made them aware of this pending change to landscaping. So, they are aware of it.
One of the changes, and I'm sorry for rushing through this. I'm trying to be efficient of time. One of the changes here was, in the past, that height measurement, that 24-inch measurement, was from top of curb adjacent to the parking. And now, we've gone to top of pavement. And it seems to be less specific. Can you talk about that, please?
Sure. Top of curb typically has been interpreted in the past to mean the curb where the sidewalk is. So, think of the street and then the curb and gutter sidewalk, and then the parking lot. Parking lots are typically at a slightly higher elevation than the street and the sidewalk below. So, by changing it to top of pavement, we're actually rising the level of measurement now, which would increase the actual overall height of the shrubbery.
I struggle with that a little bit because, you know, most of the ones I see, there's a step up on the curb.
Commissioner, I have to caution you. We can't do opinion right now. We're just questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maintenance. There was a little upset about maintenance. What is the requirement for maintenance going forward?
The requirement for maintenance remains unchanged. It's simply that all trees be maintained. There's regulations in there which say that the shrubbery has to reach 75% density and ground coverage within four years, and that all of the trees have to reach their noted canopy requirements within 15 years, and that all appropriate irrigation systems and maintenance shall be in place to ensure the health and viability of the landscaping.
And that would be in that enforcement that you talked about earlier when you talked about some properties on a list of properties you're trying to address? Yes?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm old school. I have all the papers printed out here. I'm going through my notes, so. On the very last page of this, actually, it's not the very last page. It's on page 13 of 15 on the ordinance. I kind of got lost with this. I was having a little trouble following this last bit, which is, I think it was intended to talk about deviations from the standards, but I was having a little trouble following the crossouts and the revised language.
Did you say page 13?
Yeah, page 13 of 15. This is on the ordinance itself.
Yeah, this is the update to include the updated language related to the state regulations for the model water-efficient landscape ordinance. This is kind of a cleanup item that we went ahead and put in since we were updating the code. We had passed requirements related to the previous version of the state regulations, and those needed to be updated to reflect the current state regs. And that's what this section's relating to.
So, these are state mandated provisions that we need to have?
Correct, related to that water budget for each project.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cader?
I just had a couple of questions for staff. The first being, as this was developed, was there any coordination with the signage ordinance to create? You know, the signage ordinance has some requirements as pertaining to buildings and physical objects. But is there any development as far as the coordination with landscaping? You know, anticipating the stone pine next to the sign? Things like that?
No, again, I think that the sign ordinance lays out the minimum size and location requirements, or the maximum, I guess you could say, for signage. And this landscape ordinance lays out the minimum landscaping that should be installed. And it would be up to the individual project designer to best co-locate those things together.
Okay. And my second question pertains to water efficiency and drought tolerance. And, you know, given coming out of a very serious drought, how is the city's landscape ordinance plant species adapting to landscape that, you know, kind of away from the English garden towards the Arizona desert that's maybe more cohesive to the environment we live in? As far as providing quality landscaping, but not necessarily water-intensive, is that modified, allowed species and other?
I think the best answer to that, Commissioner Cader, is that the state is doing their best to do that for us.
Okay.
The state has mandates pertaining to the water efficiency and the water budgets. And that, of its own, in order to meet that criteria, individual developers will need to select plant species that are in align with that water budget. So, it's not necessary for the city's local ordinance to go to that degree of specificity.
And have you found any, in talking about increasing minimum landscape areas, increasing density of trees, that we're still in a safe zone of compliance as far as not conflicting with, you know, if the state is requiring less water, we require more trees, that we're not reaching some sort of?
Again, that's going to be species-related. As I mentioned earlier, the state plans to update their drought requirements every three years. So, for the city to correlate a tree list or a plant list that is specifically aligned to include drought-tolerant plants only would be extremely limiting. And it would require the city to then update the ordinance every few years when the state changes its mind. So, at this point, requiring a specific number of trees and leaving it to the individual developers to decide how they can meet that state water mix is the recommended route.
So, let it see how it plays out and then adjust as needed. Yep. And then last, my question was on discretionary review. I know the current landscape code allows for deviations to be considered by planning staff. And the landscape code, especially landscape setbacks as they pertain to building form, they seem written for a very specific type of development, which granted, is a large majority of what we develop in Bakersfield currently. But, you know, as there's, and I know that there's some, in the landscape ordinance, there's some exceptions for the CB and the CC zone, which is a very specific downtown section. But as we're seeing a shift nationally, and especially in our state, towards kind of more walkable, more lifestyle, for me, the question of the landscape between the building and the sidewalk, is there a provision that we can encourage buildings that are more sidewalk-friendly, directly adjacent, and not needing that 10, 15 feet of landscape if the purpose is to promote a more walkable? I mean, is that something that would be handled under discretionary review? Or is there a way to make the language a little bit more all-encompassing?
I think that's an interesting point to bring up is the only portion of the landscape ordinance that can be waived administratively by staff, as far as I'm aware, is that landscape strip along the street. So, and that's intended to allow and facilitate that kind of placement of buildings.
Interface, okay.
Ideally, we would see more buildings along the arterial streets and not way at the back of the parcel of the sea of parking. And over time, that could evolve, and the way that the ordinance is structured now can facilitate that.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I only have one question. But then I have lots of opinion. We'll wait for that. I know. It's really hard to just ask a question. Page 11 of 15. Is there a reason why you use the word irrigation system plan should include instead of shall? I mean, typically, you use the word shall.
I think what we were following there was some of the state regs. If they don't require it, we didn't require it, but we're encouraging it. So, that'd be the best way to put it. Because we don't want to be overly burdensome, but we want to try to encourage that type of irrigation system.
Well, now, we're going to get into opinion. So, then I'm going to be quiet.
And before you close the hearing, since there has been quite a bit of comment, I just want to caution you. If we want to continue it, we'll have to reopen the hearing. So, just keep that in mind. But if we're comfortable that we're going to come to a conclusion today, that would be great. We'll close it and leave it closed and decide. But if it seems likely to continue to send anything back to us for reevaluation, it will need to be reopened. Otherwise, we have to renotice the hearing, and it's a little bit of a burden on staff.
That being said, if your commission has any recommended changes, you can give those to us tonight, and we will take those forward to city council. So, if there's any tweaks, adjustments, anything like that, we will bring those forward. Like changing the word should to shall. We could do that.
I'm not sure. This is the first time I've ever heard anybody say that because I've never heard us be cautioned not to, if we're going to continue. I've never had that happen. So, maybe you want to run that by us again?
Yeah, so, the rule is if we continue a hearing that's left open, we don't have to renotice it. We can always continue a closed hearing, but then the public doesn't necessarily know that it's still open. And when it comes back to you guys.
I know how the mechanics work, but I wonder why you're telling us that.
Just because, you know, Mr. Kirschman was the one member of the public here today. And if there's thought that we add more things to this, that it would be fair to give the public another free shot to comment on whatever we bring back. That's what I'm cautioning. But if you're.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm afraid of. If you ask us to make a lot of revisions and we close the hearing, then there is no more public comment. It just comes back to you guys, which may be what you want. But what I'm saying is that I think to be fair to the public, we would leave it open.
I think I get it. So, let me try this on for size, okay? And I have to talk without opinion. So, Mr. Kirschman, I did speak to him, and he was not noticed when the public was invited to the ad hoc committee. I would imagine we missed some other developers, too. So, given that fact, and we only have four commissioners, I would propose that we continue this. And I would look to the commission to see if I'm not the only one.
Well, I wasn't notified either, but, you know, we know that we have a committee that does address those issues. Not everybody can be involved. It seems to me that there was an effort to include people from the community that had input. Yeah, we probably didn't call every contractor listed in the state contractors license board list, but I think that we made some effort to include everybody. I don't think that we got to the point where we're making changes. I think legal may have jumped the gun a little bit. We haven't even got to the opinions of the board yet or the commission yet.
But we can't get to those while the hearing is open. So, they're trying to save some noticing.
So, you're going to close the hearing now?
No, no, no. We would leave the hearing open.
You're going to leave the hearing open for what purpose?
To allow another go at this, to allow others to come back.
Well, then, you could also, while it's open, refer us to make changes. You can always do that now.
Okay, but here's where, this has never happened. I've been doing this a long time, and I've never seen this happen before. How in the world can we say, "We want to address X, Y, and Z" without showing bias and opinion?
Because my take would be you'd be referring it back to staff to make changes, and we'd come back with a new proposal. So, if we close the hearing, and it's fine. If we want to go ahead and close it, you guys can start voicing opinions. It's just, it's a step that I was trying to.
Okay, but we can renotice.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, I just don't see how we can do this without closing, talking, and giving you guys some opinion and direction. I just don't see how we can do it.
Understood.
Okay, fair enough, you guys will just have to renotice.
That's fair enough.
All right, because I think that's what we need to do. Okay, okay, all right, guys, I hope you're with me on this. So, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return it to the commission for comment and opinion. Anybody want to go first? I guess I'll go first. I got lots of opinion on this one, but I have a cold, so bear with me, see if I can get all my brain cells to fire. I mean, I'm, I'm just going to go with my notes, we'll, we'll go this way. So, so in the presentation, we see there's a 40% canopy requirement within 15 years. And we got a 75% ground coverage within four years. But I've never heard or what? So we put these requirements on the, on the developers, and we say, hey, you got to do X, Y, and Z, but then what happens? I mean, nobody ever goes back to say, hey, you don't have your 40%. There's no or what, there's no consequence, there's no enforcement, there's no, there's no irrigation requirements that they continue to water. I've seen time and time again where irrigation goes in and they don't turn it on. So the trees die, I see that the trees get too big, and they pull them out because of the signage. I mean, they're, without enforcement, I just don't understand why we're even having this conversation. We need an all encompassing look at this. So, if we say, and I love this, don't get me wrong. I think that we, it's about time that Bakersfield treats itself better, with more respect, and, and at a higher level of, higher standards. I, I want that, we deserve it, we are a wonderful community, and we should look like who we are. But with this, what, what's gnawing at me is, and, and thank you Elliot for bringing all those pictures, because I see this and go, well, be careful what you ask for. Because if we don't have the enforcement, and we don't have irrigation standards, and to make sure that these things are getting trimmed properly, they're just going to yank these trees out, and then what do we have? So if we don't look at the whole problem, how are we going to, this is just, what, be careful what you ask for. So I got a bunch of notes, but I could just go on and on and on, but that's, that's the direction I'm going. It just, this is a very small piece of what we really need to do. And I don't want to do this and, and leave this other really big problem that we've had in this community for a very long time. Is enforcement, standards. Somebody take this from me. Thank you. Let's see, who went first, Commissioner Wade?
Chairwoman, I'd like to bring Mr. Kirschman back up, so I could ask him some questions, is that all right?
Technically, the hearing's closed, but if you, next time, if we come back, you could always ask him again. If you have opinions that are related to his comments, maybe we could try to address those as staff.
Yeah. Okay, well, the effect of my, my questions are going to be basically, it sounds like, maybe I've fallen victim a bit to his persuasiveness, but it, it sounds as though, and, and I, I think you, Mr. Kirschman probably speaks a bit for development community in town, although probably not entirely, given that I'm sure you guys met with quite a few developers. But it sounds like no one's against tightening these things and making a better Bakersfield. But there might just be another wave of, of a look at this to make smarter changes. That maybe we all agree that we can make changes, maybe they can be smarter changes. And so I, I would be in agreement about wanting to come back with this.
Commissioner Coleman, you're next.
Thank you. I have my own photos, I can do this, right? All right. I brought copies for the council members, clerk has a copy, and Ms. Kitchens, I mailed you one earlier. Can you, can we put that up on the, on the screen? And I really kind of hate to make Cafe Rio the poster child for why we need higher standards. And so it's, it's not them per se, but I, I had a chance to look at this project, and yes, you know, their, their landscape median is, or landscape frontage there is wide enough. But we have a current standard that requires a two-foot screen or plant line. There seems to be some thought that, that can happen over a four-year period of time. I'm looking at the photos that, that I put here, and this is a minimum plan. If you look at photo one and two, this is that front strip that follows Gosford. On the next page, photograph four, you know, starts to show that along the monument sign, he was able to build some lush hedge row, but he failed to do it on the street side. And so it makes you think that, you know, our minimum standard is not enough, because he was able to do it, chose not to, on the street side. And I've been told that this meets the standard at the time, and I'll accept staff's opinion on that. But I, I looked a little farther on, this is page six of this plan. Or this, this little package of photos, this is page, photograph number 11 and 12. And again, he has, I say he, I probably shouldn't use that term, but developer has, you know, two-foot worth of, of screen, he's got big lush trees. All the way, you go to the next page, behind the building, he's got huge trees and lush landscape. And if you go to page nine, you have big plush trees in his center parking area with nice high landscape screen. And then you go back to the street with the scrawny trees that he put along the front with no hedge row, no screen. And so, to me, this drives home the point why minimum standards need to be raised to require people to do a bare minimum. Is it going to be all encompassing? No. There's a certain amount of responsibility has to be taken by the registered architects that are submitting these plans for placement of the trees. We gave some discretion to the planning commission, planning director to say, you can group trees together. And so the landscape architect needs to be thinking about this stuff. We shouldn't have to, you know, tell him where to plant the trees and, you know, where to put the sprinkler heads, although when we, when he gives us a plan, we want to, we want to see those things. And so I just went through this, this one project, and I, I apologize for calling out this, this one project, but if you go on to the last two pages, page 12 and 13, this is the same project, Mr. Kirschman, that you provided photos of. And, you know, maybe in time, that tree issue is going to be a problem, but not for a long, long time. So my concern is that, you know, we're going to have scrawny landscape in these areas, and we should do better job of making minimum standards. And you're not going to be able to have a perfect plan, that's why these things evolve over time as we, as we move forward. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cader.
Thank you. And I think I would just reiterate Commissioner Wade and Commissioner Loma's comment of, I think, part of the report that was the most surprising to me was the acknowledging the need for a minimum quality in maintaining trees, but then, you know, the kind of dismissal of, but we won't, we won't do that. Because I think, I mean, I really applaud the effort to enhance landscape, like Commissioner Loma said, to, to be, to represent the Bakersfield that we all know and love, and to raise standards. But to me, I would rather have a 15-gallon tree that stays alive than a 24-gallon tree that dies in two years. And I think, and I think that the conversation comes up a lot about minimum standards providing direction, but I think if you provide minimum direction, minimum standards that result in trees dying, and you rely on the goodness of developers, or developers to realize the marketing potential of alive, of trees that are alive, we're going to have a lot of dead trees in our community. And so I think, and I even, I would say, you know, the, the state requirements of efficiency are also giving us a tool chest that we maybe didn't have as a community before, as far as, you know, watering techniques that work for our landscape, that we're not taking imported ideas from the East Coast and saying, let's just throw water on the ground here, and, you know, poppies will just start appearing. But, you know, there's, there's been research, there's been knowledge done, and I think, I remember growing up, it was yearly, the drive down California Avenue would be a depressing march of trees that had been cut almost to oblivion, and a couple of years, they'd grow back, and they'd do it again. And I think, you know, we're a community that's seen a lot of topping, we've seen a lot of things that are known, arborist practices that are not good for the life of the tree. And, I mean, it's really hard to take out a 50-foot tree and not have people notice. And so I think, for me, I think, you know, for this to have impact, it needs to also have longevity, and needs to have, like Commissioner Loma was saying, some teeth to it. And I think, yeah, the integration of some best practice as base requirement, and not as kind of good for you. But you can do whatever you want, I think would just continuously give us problems. You know, I think, I think otherwise, we kind of have the grand opening with a very lush, beautiful landscape that over years becomes, you know, pretty much a bark, what was it, the bark zone, is that what you, yeah? Bark forest, yeah, a bark forest, which is also very drought tolerant. And then, yeah, I would, and then I would also just, if, the comment, I would just see landscape as not a one-size-fits-all. So I, I appreciate the discretionary review, and I, but I think, you know, as we look to also being a Bakersfield that's a little bit more walkable, a little bit more sustainable, that we acknowledge that, that some landscape requirements can also impede pedestrian circulation and the connection between sidewalk and site. And I think that as we're looking at creating an advanced landscape plan, that we realize that the ultimate goal is to provide a quality space for people, for bikes, for cars, for people walking. And, yeah, and I would just say, as an architect on the commission, I definitely don't think that the responsibility of the design team should shift to the city. But I do think, I appreciate Mr. Kirschman's photos, because I think, looking at the landscape and the buildings and how they age, you can kind of see, it almost looks like two things that were not thought about together. You know, we want to be a Tree City USA, and then we also want to be, you know, a branding street where everybody can see every business that exists. And I think incorporating into our signage package just some clarifying language or diagrams would not be a bad way to say, you know, because, would not be a bad way to, to help people on the right path. Yes.
Thank you, very well said. Commissioner Wade?
Director Kitchen, in terms of enforcement for these sorts of misdeeds, how many people on the, on the city staff can go do that? How many people are there that are tasked with that job?
Commissioner Wade, presently, we have about, it varies a little from day to day, 11 code enforcement officers for the entire city. They enforce issues related to homelessness, related to litter, related to trash, related to abandoned vehicles on private property. They assist the police department in dealing with issues on the public right-of-way and more. And when there is something that usually me or someone in our development community sees in a situation like this, we may make them aware of it, but for the most part, our code enforcement team is complaint-driven, as are most code enforcement departments in local jurisdictions. And so we handle these kinds of situations on a case-by-case basis. Our existing ordinance does have provisions related to landscaping in terms of required irrigation. There are specific prohibitions against the topping of trees. There are requirements that any maintenance be done in line with the appropriate arborist requirements. But beyond that, I, it's not very feasible for me to have code enforcement staff or city staff sitting out in parking lots and making sure that each tree trimming company is doing everything right. I wish that we had that capacity, and it may be at some point in the future, we might have more capacity. But at this point, I think that the establishment of a clear minimum is a good step in the right direction. And then over time, as we see new development come through, we will encourage placement and use of trees that won't need to be hacked back to nothing.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to bring the light, because I think we, as commissioners, need to remember that in terms of what we're expecting to get back from staff, just perfectly enforcing all the rules that are in place now isn't also the fix-all. I mean, maybe if Mr. Hewat is successful in increasing our taxes, we can get some more people.
He should have gone first.
The, the city is doing a lot with a little bit of money. And, and I don't, that's, I don't know if that's going to be changing anytime soon, as far as more people are going to be out there looking at who's topping their trees. So I, I think something can be done that is better than what we have. But whatever comes back, I think we need to make sure we're not expecting a magic bullet with, oh, we're going to hire 10 more enforcement officers, and, you know, it'll all go away. So that's, that's my comment.
I have a question for you. You're right, completely right, we're not going to all of a sudden get all these people that are going to be out there and, and, and play, play tree police. But I do have a question. In, when someone is cited, so you've got your ones that you're going to go check on, what does that mean? So they get cited, and then what happens?
Yeah, so we have an administrative process through code enforcement, and it's the same whether it's landscaping, a zoning issue, a trash issue, whichever it may be, they're cited. Well, we receive the complaint, a code officer goes out, conducts an investigation. And if they find that there is an issue, they issue a citation. They give that person an opportunity, usually 30 days, to remedy that citation. They then go out, conduct the second investigation. If the issue has not been remedied, there's a second citation issued. At that point, there's a fine issued. Then there's a third opportunity for the property owner to come forward and speak at a hearing to contest the issue, and then, or further prove that they've remedied the situation. And if it goes beyond that, we usually have to enter into a civil type of situation, or there's additional penalties and fines. One thing that I have experienced with landscape in particular, there have been property owners that don't see the fines as a deterrent, they would rather remove the trees.
And that's my second question, so how much does it cost? So is, is it a possibility to increase the amount of the fines?
There is a new process, it is an administrative fine process, and I'll let Mr. Agar discuss that a little with you. It's something new, it's a civil penalty type of situation, it's different than our administrative process, then it's through the court system.
Yeah, so right now, we have civil fine option of $1,000 per violation per day that we could always seek. It's very labor and time intensive, so we've not used it for this type of situation yet. But it could be a possibility in the future if there was a really offensive shopping center that took out a ton of sycamore trees and made it a blightland. We could always use that option, we just have not yet. It requires filing a civil lawsuit, which in itself takes two, three years to wrap up. So we've just, as I said, we've not used it for this yet.
In the fine structure, though, who sets the fines?
The municipal code currently sets it at $1,000.
But can't we increase that number?
Not currently, because of the government code section. So the government code caps what you can charge as either administrative fines or civil fines at whatever misdemeanor fines are. So it's that $1,000 right now. It's per day, though, and per violation. So if you cut down 20 trees, and we, you cut them down on July 1st, it's going to start racking up that $1,000 per day for 20 trees, it adds up quick. So when we sued marijuana shops, we go after them on a per-day basis, it gets up to over $100,000 really quick.
Okay, so we know of more than one shopping center that has removed trees. What are we doing?
Staff has worked with those shopping center owners, they're currently in various stages. Some of them have remedied the situation after working with staff. There's one example where city staff has spent probably over 40 hours working with this one property owner, and going back and forth and discussing which trees should be replaced, and why, and negotiating that. There are several other situations that are in various stages of that administrative process with code enforcement.
Are the fines racking up?
Those are a different fine, those are not the $1,000 a day fines that Mr. Agar was discussing. Those are our typical code enforcement fines, which, I don't have the fine sheet in front of me, but it's a couple hundred bucks.
And that's my point, so there's your teeth. We don't have staff, we don't have, but if, if they've clearly done something incorrect.
Well, and as Mr. Agar said, the civil penalty, the beefier fine, is a very different process that's through the court system. And it's the more labor-intensive two-to-three-year process.
So.
That hasn't, it's been used predominantly with the marijuana situations where there's a misdemeanor occurring. It's not typically used for land use type violations at this point.
So here we are again, here we go, full circle. So we say, okay, guys, we want you to make minimum standards, and we all are in agreement. No one's in disagreement that we want standards. No one's in disagreement that we want standards. And we can all point to, my, the one I would point to, my poster child is Coffee Road. Go down Coffee Road. That one just, that's terrible. Those buildings with, like, these-sized trees? Anyway, we, we're, no one's in disagreement. So, Steph, you guys are smart. How do we put teeth in this? Because...
It sounds like this is the issue that you're asking staff to go back and research.
Yes.
I don't have an answer for that tonight.
Okay, so, can we just check off, these are all the things of our concerns, send them all back to you guys?
Yes, so, the next step would be to refer this back for further research on the administrative fining and the enforcement action. I'm not hearing any requested changes to the actual code recommendations themselves unless there's...
I got a list.
Other changes?
I got a list, but I'm going to, I'm going to defer, and then I'm going to come back with my list. Okay? No, you go ahead. All right, so here's my list. You want it?
No.
All right. Okay. Address the decel lane issue. I would also like to have a better sense of our sign ordinance, and how that relates to this. Because we do have a sign ordinance. So, and that wasn't spoke of, so I would like, I'd like that reviewed together. Hold on. Irrigation standards in, irrigation's, I'm very sensitive to, because I moved into a neighborhood, and they planted the trees, and, I don't, they planted the trees, there was irrigation, there was a timer, and then the timer just got turned off, because nobody would pay the bill. So, there has to be power, so you have to power up the irrigation. So, and forgive me if I don't ask this question properly. We see, we see commercial properties that come in, and then they subdivide it, and they sell off parcels. Well, how do you put a landscape irrigation on pieces? You understand what I'm saying? Yeah? Thanks, Elliot. They're looking at me like, I don't know. You know, when you've got one great big shopping center, that's real easy. It's a single owner, but once you get one big parcel, and you've got 12 owners, how do you impose your irrigation? How do you, who pays for all the irrigation? You've got to break it up into 12 little pieces. So, I'd like to know if that's been discussed and addressed. I'd like that language should and shall be cleaned up. The parceled off, the tree removal. I mean, that's the whole piece that, that gets me fired up is, so we plant all these beautiful trees, which I totally agree with. I think this is lovely. But if we plant them, they can't just tear them out. There needs to be some real teeth to keep them from doing that. The signage in conflict, but if you take your sign ordinance and, and match it up with this, that will help with, with any conflicts with signs. Coffee Road, don't like that. Median standards, this is a good one. Median standards, so the developer has to put the median in, right? But they're putting grass in. What standards do we have? Do, have we changed that?
Chairman Lomis, these standards do not relate to street medians or anything within the public right-of-way at all.
But they have to put them in, don't they?
Right, that's part of the development standards that's administered through Public Works.
So, why aren't we talking about the medians also, since they have to put them in?
Because those are not subject to the landscape ordinance. And actually, there's new legislation that's in Sacramento right now, that is completely precluding the use of any turf within a median at all. And city staff, and Mr. Agar can add to this, is reviewing that to figure out how we are going to comply with the latest out of Sacramento.
Yeah, it's actually been law that we can't have grass, new grass and medians for, I want to say, three years now, and they're making it stronger and stronger every day about irrigation and the median. So, a lot of those standards, like I said, we don't cover them in our ordinance, because the state law changes so rapidly. The subdivision design manual from Public Works is easier to keep up with that stuff. So, when they come through for their plan check at Public Works, that's where a lot of these issues are addressed. And like Ms. Kitchen said, it's not something that's really in our purview right now, because we don't have an ordinance in place for it, and nor was city council asking us to develop one. So, it's not really something we're looking at now.
Understood, but since they have to pay for it, that's why I'm, I'm bringing it up. But what I'm hearing from you is, the state's pretty tight on it. There's not a lot of wiggle room. Am I correct in how you're, okay. So, we'll let that one go. Also, the provisions for that utility easement, that's a really good point, that, that should be addressed. What kind of language do you need to allow for that? And I want to plan for the long haul. Commissioner Coleman, with all due respect, you said, the trees aren't going to get big for a long, long time, but they are going to get big. And we want to make sure that that tree survives and is an asset to our community. And we do need to worry about it now. Okay? So, I want to think about the long haul, not be very short-sighted. So, this, I'd like staff to come back with this beautiful start, but let's wrap it all up and, and get beginning to the end. And I think that's all mine. Anybody else want to add anything? Yeah? We got it. All right, so then, we will... Commissioner Coleman.
Sorry, sorry. I, I liked the plan, but I kind of see the direction we're going here. So, I guess the only thing that I would ask, if you're going to change something, is to decide or to describe when the, when the code has been met. In other words, you have this four-foot requirement, but when is that? Is that when you plant them, or is that, you know, 14 years from now? And I, I'd like to have some clarity on that, if I was going to change anything.
Good point. All right, so now, what do we do now, Coach?
It sounds like your revised recommendation would be to refer this item back to staff for additional review and research to be brought back at a later date.
Thank you, we would really like that. Do you need any action from us?
Yep, go ahead and make a motion with Ms. Kitchen's verbiage.
Who wants to take it, guys? I need a motion. Somebody. Thank you, Commissioner.
I will make a motion to refer this back to staff for, to incorporate Commissioner comments, and to bring back to commission at a later date.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wade has a second.
I will second that.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
And we will move on to, where are we?
Can I still inquire one more thing?
Sure.
How long is it going to be before we see that back?
Our intent is to bring it back quick, because this was a council referral, so we don't want to drag our feet on it at all, because he's expecting to see it at city council soon. So, it won't, it should not be that long. I don't want to make any promises, but it's not, we're not going to drag it out.
Thank you.
All right, now we got new business. Do we have any new business? Oh, yeah, we do. Ms. Kitchen.
Okay. New business, we have the esteemed Mr. Hewat from the city manager's office here to provide us an update.
Ms. Kitchen, you, you actually missed the selection of chair and vice-chair.
Yeah, sorry. Because it says for you.
I apologize.
It's 7A, we're on 7A, sorry, and it says to go to you.
Chris was excited, so...
I was excited to hear Chris's outlook presentation.
My apologies. Item number seven is selection of the chair and vice-chair for the 2018-19 term. The 2018-19 term ends on April 30th of next year, so this is to be determined by the planning commission.
Thank you. So, at this time, I am looking for a motion for chairman. Commissioner Wade.
I move to make Commissioner Kater the chairman for the, the city manager.
Good choice. Commissioner Coleman, you want to second that?
I would love to second that.
Wonderful, and we will do a roll call vote? Oh, wait a minute, do we have any other nominations? No. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you, and we will need a motion for vice-chair.
I'd like to make a motion for Commissioner Coleman.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second from Commissioner Wade?
Second that motion.
Look how that worked, isn't that great? Anybody else? Nope. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Lomis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we're on to workshops. Ms. Kitchen.
Now, it's time for the esteemed Mr. Hewat, here to give us a fiscal outlook presentation, presented on behalf of the city manager's office. I'll turn it over to Mr. Hewat.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. Thank you for indulging us this evening. The purpose of me being here is an ongoing dialogue that we're having with pretty much any established body that has an agenda and a meeting schedule that we can get on to discuss the city's fiscal outlook, and a discussion that's occurring with the city council. And so, at the direction of the city council, I am before you tonight. This is an informational-only presentation for you this evening, and maybe we'll actually lend some insight into the discussion that was occurring earlier about staffing and availability of, of certain areas to take on certain activities within the community. So, a little bit about what we're talking about this evening, we're talking about what general government services the city provides, and you're all familiar with most of these. The ones that are bolded for you are the ones that are within the cities and paid for out of the city's general fund, and those are the discretionary dollars the city has available to pay for things like police, fire, recreation and parks, streets, code enforcement, building and planning, and animal control. The three at the bottom are our enterprise, enterprise areas that are paid for by separate assessment and fees that are charged to support those services independent of the general fund. So, a little bit about, again, why we're having this discussion, potentially about looking at additional resources, as Mr. Wade alluded to. In part, the city has grown greatly since 2000. New numbers released earlier this month showed that the city grew again last year. We're now up to 387,000 residents roughly. That's a 57% increase since the year 2000. During that same time period, as you're probably well aware, we've grown in size as well. The area of the city has grown 32%. We're now providing more services to more residents over a larger area. We've constructed two police substations that are in service. Similarly, we've constructed two fire stations, and staffed two fire stations that are in service, and we've seen an 82% increase in street miles maintained during that period of time. We've also constructed nine new neighborhood parks, constructed two new sports complexes, of which new phases have opened in both of these within the last month due to demand of the community, as well as an increase in the number of park acres maintained. This is just park acres. This does not include streetscapes or medians that the city is responsible for maintaining. This in and of itself has increased 97% since 2000. A little bit about the outlook and, and the discussion, the crux of it. We have seen over the last several years, changes in the city's revenue that make it difficult to continue to maintain the level of service that the community has come to expect, in part due to changes in the energy and ag sectors. Those are the mainstays of the city's economy, but they are very cyclical, and what we've seen, especially in the oil sector, if you've seen the, the recent media article about the lack of jobs, even though the price per barrel of oil has been increasing, we have not seen jobs come back in that sector. The city does not see revenue directly from the commodity price as the county does. The jobs are very important, and that activity is very important, because when those jobs are created, people are spending discretionary dollars within the city, and, and there are revenues that are generated from that, as well as the equipment purchases that are made within the city to support oil field operations. When, when those don't occur or are reduced, that significantly impacts the city. We just, at this point, based upon every information, piece of information that we have, we don't feel as though the sector is going to return to a level that it was in 2013, or 14, or prior, at, at a more healthy level than it is today, unfortunately. We've seen some large, non-energy sector companies announce that they are leaving Bakersfield, not necessarily anything that's, that has to do with anything local necessarily, but it, it is troubling. We've also seen a trend, and we're all aware of how easy it is to buy anything online these days, and so, what that does, and through the way the state collects and distributes sales tax, it actually cuts the city's percentage of sales tax that we receive from those transactions by 50% or more. And that's not anything we can control locally at this time, that's a decision that's made at the state level, but it's further impacting our revenues. We've continued to see the state place several roadblocks in front of us. If you're familiar with Prop 47 and 57, and AB 109, these have had ramifications on public safety and on what is considered a misdemeanor, what we can ticket for versus actually putting somebody in jail. There are decisions now that have to be made at the state and the county level on who to keep in the prisons and in the jail system, but what that, what that has resulted in is more folks that would have been incarcerated are now out on the streets, and we're rearresting and rearresting and rearresting. And we do not have the staff to be proactive, as I'll get to in a moment, to, to prevent some of the issues that are occurring in the community, due in large part to, to these actions at the state level. Seen some other actions that have reduced the city's revenues and inability to address issues. SB 89 diverted about $1.5 million ongoing from the state's general fund. Redevelopment, as we're all aware, went away several years ago. That took an $8 million tool that we had in our tool belt to address blight, and so we do not have that ability anymore. We have several other mandates that have come down from the state, in which we receive absolutely no reimbursement, and it's been very challenging to deal with those, some that I've listed here and others, and still be able to provide those core services that residents expect. We know that we have increases on the horizon, and one of them that you've heard about is CalPERS. And many of the issues that we have with CalPERS, again, are resident in Sacramento. We feel that we have gone to great lengths to control those costs locally where we can. We have some, some other ideas that I'll share with you in just a moment, but the question that we get quite a bit is, well, can we just get out? Can we do something else moving forward? What can we do? The answer is not much. CalPERS, if, if you no longer are a member and decide to leave that program, they will hit you with a bill for their calculation of the, essentially unfunded liability. They believe, they, we believe that that'll be calculated to, to come out around $1 billion in a payment that would be necessary. We have other cost increases that are on the horizon, our public safety radio system, the radio system that the police officers and fire department use is analog. The, the manufacturer has said we are no longer supporting that as of later this year. We will have to then maintain, and as we are doing now, repairing that in part by purchasing parts on eBay. We do not have $17 million as of this moment to upgrade that system, although we are studying options, and we are doing that in partnership with the county, not to duplicate our efforts and to co-locate certain infrastructure. We're doing that with cost in mind, and we're evaluating how we can take that step to correct this issue. However, we do not have that solution just at this moment. So, we get asked quite a bit, what's the city done to reduce costs? How do we know you're being efficient? We have always taken a conservative budgeting approach. We do more with less. We, there was a study done in 2013, it looked at every city in the United States with a population of 200,000 or more residents. The city... States with a population of 200,000 or more residents. The city of Bakersfield was 107 out of 107 as far as the staffing and population ratio, had the leanest staffing out of those 107 cities. That number has further eroded. We were one of the first cities in the state to reform pension back in 2013 with Measure D, and every employee, several in this room that were hired after 2006, received absolutely no retirement health benefits, so that liability was essentially capped in 2006. We've made $15 million in cuts to the general fund since 2014, '15, and that's been done through several different areas. So, we essentially have longer response times and lower service levels than we did several years ago. Because of this, we've cut 13 positions, among several other examples I've listed. We've been installing and will continue to look for any sort of energy efficiency projects that we can accommodate and lower our costs. So, we've done that with our 59 parks. We've installed a MaxiCom system, which is a smart irrigation system. Just recently, we entered into a project with PG&E for no upfront capital cost to the city to retrofit 13,000 streetlights to LED. That's going to be completed by June 2018, and we anticipate approximately $700,000 annual savings in electricity costs just for that one project. We pursue grants, but those are not necessarily for personnel. A lot of those are project-specific. And although we have been very successful in receiving those grant dollars, that's not a solution for what we're facing here either. Quickly, we are efficient in many levels. We utilize the private sector for several of our operations, including the management of the arena and the convention center. About 50% of our refuse operations are funded, are operated through private haulers. And all the large regional sports complexes I talked about, Arrow Park, Sports Village, and Mason Marin, are either wholly or partially operated by either youth sports leagues or privately maintained with private sector employees. We also look to different agencies to evaluate our departments. And so, over the last several years, we brought in the International Association of Chiefs of Police to do a top-to-bottom evaluation of our police department. They came up with several recommendations that we implemented with a very minimal investment in our eyes. One of the things that that did was reduce our Priority One, the most urgent response calls, from 12 minutes to 5 minutes and 30 seconds. What that also did was making several types of calls that are Priority Two and classified as Priority Two and lower. We don't have, again, the staffing to go out to every one of those lower priority calls, so people will call the police department, say you have to go out and fill a form online. I'm sorry, we can't send an officer out for your car that's broken into or that your home that's been broken into. Fill a report out online. And that is in part what we're trying to work towards, providing a better response to those calls, as I'll get into in just a moment. Our fire department has a Class II insurance service office rating. This insurance service office, they go out and rate every fire department for their purposes in part of calculating insurance rates. And the Class II designation is the second highest rating that you can get. Only 1.5% of the fire departments get that rating. That rate, they look at resources available and staffing levels, and, again, we want to maintain that Class II designation. We have several other large departments that have gone through accreditation processes, Public Works and Recreation and Parks, looking at best practices, looking at making sure we're operating as efficiently as possible. And so, again, we've gone through those exercises, and we'll continue to do that. We've won several budget awards, our budget book and our audited financial statements. Those documents have won awards for 18 and 36 years consecutively. The Government Finance Officers Association looks at the thoroughness and the readability of those documents, and, again, only a small percentage of government entities are awarded those every year. We also launched an open budget platform last year. If you've been on the city's website and actually clicked through that, you can actually click through year-to-date data, and it actually goes back five years, but for this year, you could click in and see what the City Manager's Office has spent on pens and pencils, salaries and benefits, PERS costs. You can really get down to the granular data of the city's budget, and it's one way we're trying to be as transparent as possible with our budget. And we just recently won an award for innovation from Kern Cog for that platform. A little bit about the city's budget. Some of the, I think, misconceptions that are out there about the city's budget is that there's a lot of discretionary revenue that the city can use to spend on whatever it wants. And the reality of it is, is about 60% of the city's budget is non-discretionary, meaning we have revenues that come into the city that can only be used for a specific purpose, leaving less than 40% of the city's budget to be used for things like police, fire, streets, and parks and recreation. These are just a couple of examples of things that, I'm going to walk through these. There are a couple of funds here that I've outlined that can only be used for certain things. Park development fees, for instance, can only be used for park development. Can't raise fees above the cost of providing services just to generate revenue to pay for something else. So, I can't add 25% to the park rental fee to pay for more police. I can't raise water rates. The city can't raise water rates. I don't have the power to do that. The city can't raise water rates to pay for police patrol. And as you know, the state of California has several different state laws and propositions that govern how the city can generate revenue. A little bit about the general fund. This is the fund that we're mainly talking about here. It's the discretionary fund in which the city pays for most basic city services. About 62% of every dollar that's spent out of the general fund goes to police or fire. The next closest is Public Works at 13%, and then I will click through here to show you the different departments that receive a smaller share of the general fund. But the main purpose is to show you that over 60% of every dollar is headed to police and fire. So, a little bit about police department. We have 407 authorized sworn positions. I, at this point, like to ask, on an average shift, how many sworn staff, and this includes everything from patrol officers to detectives to lieutenants for watch commanders, that sort of thing, do we have overseeing any given shift? Remember, we run 24/7, 365. That average number is 50. We have 50 sworn staff for a city of 400,150 square miles. Some comparisons. Let me just back up real quick. The number you'll see in green, what we did is we looked at the average of the top 20 cities in California by population. We excluded Los Angeles and San Francisco, because we do not compare in any shape or form to those communities. We are number nine in the state for population, just for perspective. So, we're right in the middle of those 18 cities as far as population's concerned. When you look at both sworn and civilian staffing for police departments, the average is 742, and city of Bakersfield in the orange there is 530. Sworn staffing, when you look at those other cities, it's about 520, and Bakersfield's at 407. When you look at the vehicle theft rate, this is a rate that's put together by, again, another insurance group or private sector group. The city of Bakersfield ranked, and the last year, we had full data in 2016, as the city with the third highest rate of vehicle thefts in the entire country. Similarly, for property crime per 1,000, you can see there, the city of Bakersfield, unfortunately, is much above the average for those other cities that we are comparing against for this exercise. These are some other major crime stats that we pulled, and you look at 2003 and where we're at today, and you can see the percentage change, just again, to try to give you an idea of what is occurring in the community. Similarly, with our fire department, I won't spend too much on this slide, too much time in this slide, but, again, what it's showing is our staffing since '08 has decreased, while the calls have gone from 27,000 to 41,000. We're doing that, we're running several thousand more calls a year with less staff than 10 years ago. Just generally, a few other comparisons, again, against those 18 cities I talked about. When you look at workforce overall, the city's about half the size as far as workforce. When you look at the general fund spend per capita, the city, again, is at 5, the city of Bakersfield's at 511, and those cities are at, on average, at $740 per capita. And when you look at park spending, again, about half. What we also did is looked at those top 20 cities, and for this exercise, I didn't include anyone, or exclude anyone. I just wanted to show you what the employee ratio per 1,000 residents is. So, you see Bakersfield on the far left at 4.81. You'll see Fresno at about 8, and then you get towards the right, and, again, I don't think we obviously compared to San Francisco at 45. This just gives you some perspective on where we sit with those top 20 cities. So, you see, again, Stockton slightly ahead, Irvine, Fontana, all in the sixth range there. So, outside of the general fund, but, again, to reflect the city's conservative practices and is how we set rates, this is the graph that shows the single-family refuse rate, what you're paying for tan, blue, and green curbside pickup for your refuse and recyclables. A year's worth of service will run you about $200 in the city of Bakersfield on the far left there. And then you can see our refuse division compares, they do this annually and compare to all these different communities. Visalia's at 286 for that same service. Fresno's at 395. You get up to the Bay Area, you're looking at almost $1,800 for that same service on an annual basis. Similarly, with refuse rates, these are the different organizations and agencies that wastewater staff compares against annually, again, for a single-family residential home. 215 in the city of Bakersfield gets you wastewater service, sewer service. That same service in Modesto is 376, and you get just north of us in Tulare, and it's $570 a year. So, what are we talking about? Why are we here? We're talking about the potential for a one-cent general sales tax to go before the voters in November. Currently, on the right, that is how sales tax is distributed today in Bakersfield. We use the, utilize the base rate set by the state, where 6.25% of every taxable dollar goes to the state or the county, and 1% comes to the city for those services that I mentioned in the general fund. Additional sales tax is the most common type of local revenue measure throughout the state of California. Just for perspective, what this would do for a $20 purchase would add 20 cents to that purchase. That 20 cents would remain local. It does not go to Sacramento. It does not go to anywhere else but the city of Bakersfield. Visitors pay sales tax. We have seen, year over year, for several years, increases in visitor spending in Bakersfield. They come for events such as the CIF Wrestling Championship, which is expanding next year. They come for several other reasons, and we've seen increase in visitor spending, and that's reflective also in the hotels that are under construction or will be very soon. Again, visitors pay sales tax. When you go to Los Angeles, when you go to the Bay Area, or, say, the Central Coast, you are likely making taxable purchases. That money and that additional sales tax that you're paying then goes to the local governments to provide local services for the local residents. Again, there's going to be several items that are exempt from sales tax. This is just some common ones, groceries being the most common, but wanted to let you know what those are. So, is Bakersfield alone in having this conversation? No, it is not. Over 93% of residents in California pay additional sales tax, above and beyond that 7.25% state minimum. It's not limited, again, to Northern and Southern California, as I'll show you in a minute. The Central Valley has several of its larger jurisdictions that have voter-approved add-on sales tax measures. So, again, I'm looking at those top 20 cities. Again, we organize them in this chart by the sales tax rate you're paying when you go to those communities. You'll see Bakersfield on the far left is 7.25%. It's the only city out of the top 20 that is utilizing the base rate applied to those taxable purchases. You can see, as you move further to the right, Modesto's at 7.75%. Again, Stockton at about 9%. And then, again, here, Long Beach, is the highest at 10.25%. The average is just under that 8.5%. So, let's look at some Central Valley cities and counties, mainly here on this chart, is what we have. Again, Bakersfield's at the far left, the only one out of this group that, again, is utilizing that state-based rate. I say utilizing, it's really what's here, and that's the minimum. Arvin, Wasco, Delano, Ridgecrest, within Kern County, all have a one-cent sales tax that's been approved by their voters for local services. You get further up the valley, Visalia's at 8.5%, and then, again, Stockton at the 9%. But this just gives you an idea of where some of these other larger communities within the region fit within this discussion. The average is just about a cent or so above the base rate for the state. So, as part of this discussion, the council approved the, directed staff to go out and do some polling work through a firm. We utilized a firm called FM3. They are a leader in this field. They conducted approximately 964 survey interviews based upon historical voting trends. So, you'll see percentages here in a moment, not only on how the respondents answered certain questions, but also on the makeup of the different categories that is reflective of voters within the city of Bakersfield. Want to quickly move through these and get to some critical conversation here later in the presentation. But first and foremost, 75% of the respondents said there is a perception that crime has increased significantly within the city over the last several years. I'd like to point out here that less than 10% did not have an opinion or did not know. They also asked if, in several areas, what was perceived by the respondents to either be an extremely serious problem, very serious problem, or lesser of a problem. So, what you're seeing on the far right, it is the combined percentage of respondents that either answered extremely serious or very serious for these different areas. So, you'll see many of these categories revolve around crime and violence. There, again, second is homeless. And then, further down the line there is the recognition that the state has come in and made several cuts to city funding sources and made it challenging for the city to provide the level of service that we would like. Lesser down the line are some of these categories here. We highlight one, just to give you some, again, some perception on where this lies versus other priorities, and that is the amount you pay in local taxes. Comparatively with some of the public safety-related categories, 43% of the respondents said that the amount you pay in local taxes is either extremely serious or very serious, comparing that to the 85% or so that talked about some violence issues as well as homelessness. So, if you're familiar with ballot measures, this is a hypothetical draft ballot measure language that was provided to the survey respondents. Again, it talks about the different types of services that this measure would go to support. Talks about the fact that it's a one-cent sales tax measure, providing estimated $50 million to the city, requiring citizen oversight and audits, with no funds going anywhere else but Bakersfield. So, the initial vote, so to speak, on, after hearing that, 65% of the respondents said they would support that, either definitely yes, probably yes, or a small portion that said they were undecided but leaning yes. There was a core group of 25% that said definitely no, but, again, a very small percentage of undecided. This is how it broke down by Council Ward. So, you can see, again, there was strong support across all Council Wards, the high of close to 80%, and the low just above 50%. And as a discussion point here, what we're talking about is a general sales tax measure, so the threshold for approval is 50% plus one. There's broad support amongst, amongst the other demographics. Here is the vote by party based upon the survey respondents, by age, group, by gender, by ethnicity. So, a little bit about spending priorities, should the voters, should the council consider this, and should the voters approve it? Priority One would loud and clear, maintain and enhance public safety. Priority Two is to address the fiscal stability of the city, and I'll get into some details on how we plan to do that. Third is quality of life issues. Maintaining and enhancing public safety is absolutely the top priority. We want to improve response times to all calls and some of those lower priority calls I talked about. And they may not be lower priority to the individuals when they're occurring or when they have just occurred, and that may include assault, robberies, burglaries, theft, and, again, quality of life, neighborhood issues. We want to be able to go back out and provide visibility and proactive police patrol. That is not something that we're able to do on a regular basis right now because That is not something that we're able to do on a regular basis right now because of staffing levels and where we're at, because of the types and the volume of calls in which the police department is responding to. There are several other areas here that we have plans to address should this measure be considered and approved by the voters, including, again, maintaining that Class II ISO rating for the fire department. We are not ignoring the CalPERS discussion. Frankly, as I mentioned, we feel as we have, we have gone down a long road in making changes in what the city can control for pensions as it relates to unfunded pension liability. But should there be additional revenue, there is an option that the city has experience in, in another area, to establish a irrevocable trust, it'd be a locally-controlled trust where funds could be placed in for the sole purpose of mitigating future pension costs. And this isn't a tool that other cities have used successfully to address and control what we can control, rather than shipping money off to PERS and expecting them to hit their target investments each and every year. This would provide a tool for the city to do that. And I, and I have to mention that we have this type of trust set up for our retiree healthcare costs, and so those, that liability's been capped, but there's still a liability there. The city is funded that trust at about 44% of the expected liability. 44% does not sound like a lot, but 44% represents the highest-funded OPEB trust in the state of California. The city of Bakersfield is the leader. The average is 22%. Some cities are not addressing it at all, and don't put anything aside. Speaking to something that is near and dear to Ms. Kitchen, the economic development staff right now is a half a person. We have a half a person in the city of Bakersfield dealing with economic development. It's in part due, again, to redevelopment going away and not having some of those resources available to us, but we just, we don't think that an economic, or addressing the long-term fiscal stability of the city can only be done through trying to control costs. We have to think of ways and partner to expand and grow and diversify and strengthen the economy, and that is done through several areas. But even a, a small investment in an economic development team will go a long way. We have plans that we would like to see come to fruition, including job recruitment, business retention, business attraction. We also have the ability to receive state and federal grant dollars, but they do require a match. When we had redevelopment and other funding sources, we were able to obtain grants, and Mill Creek is a great example of how we leveraged outside dollars to transform an area. And so, we have experience in that area, but we would need additional resources to be able to effectively match some of those grants. Similarly, we have a Bicycle Master Plan, and we've received a lot of positive feedback on what is planned through that plan. However, again, those projects, and we've seen, again, a huge increase in interest in bicycle and pedestrian type of activities and requests through the city, but that plan is a master plan, and it has some very ambitious projects that will benefit the community. However, again, we have to have funds available when we go out to get grants to be able to see those projects through fruition. Finally, I'd like to address the quality of life. Homelessness is a pervasive issue throughout the community, we recognize that. We want to take a broad approach to address this, and this is not a magic silver bullet, this is not going to solve the issue in its entirety. However, we work regularly on, on what I would call a restricted level right now, just due to funding that we do have with nonprofit and private sector providers. They tell us we need to boost outreach as a community, and we do that already, but we need to do more. And so, one of the pillars would be to boost outreach efforts, which is an important process and a step in providing homeless individuals the opportunity to change their living situation for the overall benefit of themselves and the community. We need to work with our service providers to identify opportunities to increase shelter capacity. We've heard loud and clear that there's a need for more beds specifically for women. We have, again, past practice of being able to identify funds. We're not in that business, we are not in the business as a city to construct and operate shelters. We work with those who know how best to do that, and we work with them in a partnership to do that, and with additional resources, we can make inroads on that. Finally, there's going to be, if you haven't seen it tonight already, it'll be in print tomorrow, where the need for affordable housing in the community is greater than essentially it's ever been. Approximately 13,000 people are applicants for affordable housing, and they wait several years for the opportunity. However, with funding that has gone away at the state and federal level, the number of affordable housing units being constructed and considered has decreased significantly over the last several years. And so, this part of the plan would address that. And again, working with the Housing Authority or Kern and others to, to make those improvements similar to what has been done in Mill Creek and other areas. Finally, and I think this touches upon what we talked about a little bit earlier, Ms. Kitchen has 11 code enforcement officers in her department to deal with a variety of different neighborhood issues for, again, a city of 150 square miles. We also talk about streetscape and median maintenance. We have had a lot of those positions that I said were cut earlier. Were not cut from public safety, were, were cut from other parts of the organization, and those decisions were made in an effort, again, to maintain levels of public safety that are acceptable at the time to, to the residents. And, and so, what we've seen is a deterioration in the intervals in which parks and streetscapes are maintained, and it's simply, in part, a manpower issue that we would like to address because that has economic development tie-ins, that has public safety tie-ins, it goes back to the broken windows theory. And so, all of this wraps back in, to a certain extent, to that number-one priority of public safety. And I, actually, not to elongate the presentation, but that picture in the background there is actually a client of the homeless center who works out at the animal care facility. The city has had a very successful program in partnering with the homeless center to employ homeless individuals from the homeless center, trying to re-enter the workforce. And we have several different areas of the city that these individuals come in and work and get on-the-job training and skills to, to move on. We've actually moved over 400 Bakersfield homeless center clients and their families into permanent housing through this program. Accountability and oversight is paramount, we understand that. That's the number-one piece of feedback we've gotten from the community. How do we know you're going to spend the money where you say you're going to spend the money? Three things on this topic. First and foremost, this revenue would be subject, just like every other revenue, to the annual audit, again, that is done by an outside auditing agency, accounting agency. It would be tracked distinctly in the accounting system, so whether you're in the open budget document, or the budget document, or the open budget platform, you'd be able to drill down to see exactly how any new revenues would be spent down on the line item. And finally, there'd be an oversight committee, and this oversight committee, as staff is recommending it, would be made up of established community groups and representatives from those groups, as well as at-large appointments, and they would be responsible for reviewing every year the revenue estimates and the spending plan, ensuring that it's aligning with the discussion that's occurring and the priorities that I've outlined, and they would meet throughout the year as needed. What does status quo mean? It means that frankly, public safety will be impacted should the trends continue the way they're going. It will mean that response times in all areas of the city, both public safety and non-public safety, will suffer. We're not going to be able to do anything further than we are doing right now to, to address homelessness on an ongoing basis. We won't be able to do any of the economic development type of activities to grow the tax bases I discussed, and we feel as though the status quo results in really a deterioration of city services and quality of life. So, this is, again, why I'm here. I have one more slide after this, and I promise I will wrap up. But we are here because, again, this is an informational process. The council has asked to go out and, asked us to go out and do this outreach. Again, we're not looking for any action tonight by the commission. Again, this is informational only at this point. So, paths moving forward, again, I, I won't go over every point, but essentially, as staff, we see two paths moving forward for the, the city as, as an organization and as being able to provide levels of service to the community. And, and again, they essentially speak for themselves, but we feel like the long-term stability that additional resources provide is paramount in this discussion. The last question that we normally get is, are you going to be in front of us again, if this is approved in five years, saying that that wasn't enough and we need more? And the answer is no. Our staff and through our projections, this is a significant increase potentially to the city's general fund, and this is a long-term, sustainable plan. It has taken into consideration some of those losses in sales tax from Amazon and other online retailers, so that is already taken into, to effect when we, we talk about this. So, I, I think I've covered everything, and again, if I haven't tired you out, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, this, this presentation is available to you, I'd be happy to get it to Ms. Kitchen to send it directly to you, and if you are part of any other community groups that would like me to come and hear this again, I'd be happy to do that. I, I know we've, we've reached out to several, and we'll be in front of you in, in the near future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. So, what is the real next step moving this forward? I'm a little, is the council the right one to initiate this thing, get it on the ballot?
Commissioner, the discussion and whether or not that option is to place this on the ballot is an option that the council does have and is considering. There may be, there are several ways to place a, a measure on the ballot, and, and so, the council is considering doing that as a legislative body.
Okay. And just for a comment, my, my experience has been that there's not any more to squeeze out of the lemon. I mean, I think Mr. Candy has done an excellent job of running the city of Bakersfield and gets every dollar he can out of it, so I want to commend the manager's office for the way you guys run the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Kader.
Thank the city manager's office and Chris for giving the presentation. Yeah, I just want to say a quick comment of, I think, I appreciate your slides, I appreciate the background information, and I, I think as we look as how we grow, how we grow as a community, the, you know, those top 20 cities are, we're somewhat in competition for them, for jobs, for population, and I think it's exciting to see that the city's looking at strategies, not just to kind of sustain and keep status quo, but also market ourselves to be more attractive to employers and to be a place that those employers can find, you know, quality workforce that's excited about being here. So, I thank you for the presentation, I thank you for looking at, you know, an issue not just as something to solve, but as an opportunity to then grow our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to communications, my cold medicine's wearing off. Okay, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Wade.
I'll make this very, very quick. I want to not forget a suggestion that Elliot Kershaman mentioned about downtown specific plan. I don't know what that looks like, but I think we should not forget that and possibly have a conversation about it in the future, because I think there's a lot of possibilities
Commissioner Wade, I do think that the downtown specific plan concept's a great idea, and we actually already have the beginnings of one. It's the High-Speed Rail Station Area Plan. Yes, and that was adopted and approved by the city council last, in May 9th, and that is, everything takes money, as you just heard about. A specific plan would take significant money, and so, we were very fortunate to be in a position where the high-speed rail came to us with a grant for planning. It couldn't be created into a specific plan per se, that wasn't what the grant was essentially for, but what we did is we maximized that opportunity, and we turned it into a vision document, which is essentially very similar to a specific plan and lays the groundwork for future smaller code changes that can implement that vision and effectively have the same impact as, as a specific plan without going through the two to three years and the $1 to $2 million worth of work that it would take to create a specific plan. So, we've got it started, and we've got some opportunities that we can discuss more in the future.
Thank you.
Perfect. No one else? Thank you, and good night, we are adjourned.